Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. In the name of Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful, verily and indeed, all praise is due to Allah. It is due to Him and to Him alone. We praise Him and we seek His help and forgiveness. May Allah have mercy on the Prophet Muhammad ﷺ, His family, His companions, and the Muslims until the last day. Ameen. On behalf of the Islamic Circle of North America and Iqna Sisters, I would like to welcome you all to our session this evening, entitled "Pandemic or Not: Family First." My name is Hina Sayed. I'm from the great state of Texas, Alhamdulillah, and I will be your moderator for this hour, Insha'Allah. So as we are going on in our symposium today and this evening, there is one thing that our religion continuously reminds us of. It reminds us of the fact that the plight of the believer is strange. Even in times of calamities, there is good behind it and there is much wisdom behind it. Because, and the reason for this is this, that we are taught and we are told to put our full trust in Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. The Prophet Muhammad ﷺ beautifully said, "How wonderful is the affair of the believer, for his affairs are all good." And this applies to no one but the believer. If something good happens to him, he is thankful for it and that is good for him. And if something bad happens to him, he bears it with patience and that is also good for him. So even during a global pandemic, the one that like that we have never witnessed before in our lifetimes, as Muslims, now is not the time for panic, but the time for introspection, collective responsibility, and compassion towards your family and society at large. So Insha'Allah, with the will of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, eventually soon, this pandemic will be all over. But the impact that you as an individual had on your family will last for generations to come. So now with that, I would like to introduce my esteemed colleagues for this hour, for this session. And then after they have spoken for a little bit, I will ask them a few questions, Insha'Allah, and then we will conclude the session. Our first speaker on this panel is Sister Semeda Azal from Boston, Massachusetts. She is a religious advisor and chaplain at Simmons University in Boston. She is currently serving as a member of the Board of Directors for Iqna Relief and heads the Thirby Department for Iqna Sisters. She loves to spend time with her family. She loves spending time in her garden and I am very sure that she is also reading in her garden. Our next speaker is Dr. Seema Sandhu from New Jersey. She has a Masters in Psychology and PhD in Psychology. She is trained in Cognitive Behavior Therapy and much more and has exhaustive international work experience. And finally, our final speaker for this session is Sister Farhin Nasir from California. She is currently the lead for the Muslim Children of North America under the supervision of Iqna Sisters. And she is also the school coach for the Odyssey of the Mind and her team, very interestingly, scored the highest in the state and will be proceeding to the World Finals, Insha'Allah. So let's start with Sister Semeda. So her topic in this session is, "Don't Trade Your Authenticity." And as we are speaking, you will see the slides and the PowerPoint presentation looping behind you, Insha'Allah. So I'm going to invite her now to elaborate on the subject on how our children and our teens are dealing with this crisis. Semeda.
Jazakallah Khair. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Robb, jazakallah khair hina for introducing. May Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, accept our times and efforts for His sake. A'udzubillahimashan'rajim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Robbi shrahli sadrri wa yasirli amri. Wahlu akhtatan min lisanii yafqahu qawli. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. So given, just imagine, just one short month ago, we were all looking forward to spring break and the full complement of our animal activities and events like Ramadan, iftar parties, Taraweeh Eid, graduations, wedding ceremonies, and the list goes on. Who could have imagined how much our world would change at such lightning speed? Our connection to each other, to our families, and to our communities are no less intense or meaningful but profoundly different in these socially distant days. As the realities of this crisis became clear, our first party was and continues to be, Insha'Allah, the safety and well-being of our family and community members. Families may be in, some families may be in less supportive or hostile spaces and some are experiencing job loss and housing insecurities. And same goes for the children. And children are also during this pandemic, they're also under a lot of pressure. The scholarly teacher Harriet Schor writes, "In this time of uncertainty, anxiety, and fear, we have the potential to model acceptance of imperfection." Unfortunately, we already have a good idea of its results. Why I say that? In late February 2020, right before European countries mandated various forms of lockdowns, The Lancet published a review of 24 studies documenting the psychological impact of quarantine. The findings offer a glimpse of what is brewing in hundreds of millions of households around the world. In short, and perhaps unsurprisingly, people who are quarantined are very likely to develop a wide range of symptoms of psychological stress. And obviously, Dr. Seima will emphasize on that more. But the disorders that communities will see and are seeing are, that include insomnia, stress, anxiety, anger, emotional exhaustion, and depression. Now, the families who are facing these challenges, the question is, how do we care for our children and for some families while we are working and schooling at home in trying not to panic during this unprecedented outbreak? What we need to do, we need to act now to mitigate the toxic effect of this lockdown. The first step, take a deep breath. Know that we are all in this together and together we will get through it, Insha'Allah. Ameen. So the first question that I would like to address because so many mothers and so many parents are asking for younger children, so first I will focus on younger children. They ask this question, "How should we talk to younger children about this pandemic?" And my answer is, it is not difficult, but you need to be wise, you need to use your hikmah, and also you need to be gentle. What we need to, for younger children, what we need to do, we need to remind them that researchers and doctors are learning as much as they can, as quickly as they can about this virus and are taking steps to keep everyone safe and remind them to make Dua to Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, that He closely listens to the Duas of children. Second point, in terms of discussing this pandemic with younger children, is watch for signs of anxiety. Younger children may not have the words to express their worry, but you may see as a mother or as a parent or as a caregiver, some signs of it. They may get cranky, be more clingy, have trouble sleeping, or seem distracted. So keep the reassurance going and try to stick to your normal routines. Lastly, which is really important, again, it's the big question, which is, what about their media intake? So my suggestion is, monitor their media intake. Intake, keep young children away from frightening images they may see on TV, social media, computers, and etc. And for older children, talk together about what they are hearing on the news and correct any misinformation or rumors they may hear. And also, there is a rise in risk of online child abuse. So be very diligent. Now, I would like to share a few tips for younger children. Number one tip that I wanted to discuss with you that will help you to cope up with this new normal under this virus is under control. Number one is keep the routine in place and the best idea, keep your routine in place with the prayer times. And Subhanallah, five days, five times a day we pray because daily routine is important to everyone, but particularly to younger children for their psychological and emotional development. Because the consistency of schedules, predictable rules, and consequences, setting expectations, it teaches children how to behave, develop self-discipline, and importantly, a sense of safety and control. So within this topic of keeping the routines or the normal routines, few ideas, wake up on time, have breakfast at a normal time, have a designated place where everybody would sit and do their work, and then list the times of learning, exercise, and breaks, and then schedule time for lunches and snacks. And we know, like, many schools are providing, you know, take-home school meals packages for students who need them. And don't forget afternoon break as well, just as they have in their schools. And then have dinner together as a family and discuss the day. And enjoy, you know, family time. Maybe you can play something, read together, watch a lecture together, exercise together. Thank Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, that Alhamdulillah, you know, one day has passed and so, and pray for the next day. And very importantly, that stick to the bedtime routines as much as possible during the week to make sure that everybody gets enough sleep. Second point, which does not relate to the younger children, but obviously that translates into younger children, which is you and I need to manage our own anxiety. Because children, they learn from watching us. And since they will be home all the time and they will observe not only what we say as an adult, but also how we implement the structure in our own lives. And as a parent, we are experiencing significant stress during this time. So we have a double mission. We need to manage our own anxiety and stress while also modeling for our children. Third point that I wanted to share with you is, be creative about new activities. Incorporate any new activity into your routine, like, we know, like, maybe new or maybe old, like puzzles, family games, arts and crafts activities, board games, maybe science projects, homeschool projects, baking, cooking, trying new, you know, make something, you know, with your own imagination, bake something with new ingredients. So Subhanallah, but be creative. Fourth point is, limit consumption of news and focus on daily remembrance. Making Dua instead of wasting time on the social media and the news and continuously. And sometimes it's a better idea to turn the TV off or on mute and unfollow friends or coworkers who are prone to sharing panic-inducing posts because that also can feed into my anxiety as well. And then obviously, stay in touch virtually, create a virtual Muslim community, maybe have an online halika, maybe you can have your kids spend some virtual time with their friends, which you or someone can chaperon to. Because when they see their friends or their relatives online, I know some families, they started video chats with their grandchildren every night and some aunts and uncles, they are, you know, meeting together on a video chat. It's not perfect, but it helps children to feel closer and less stressed. And then also, within the family with younger children, we can make plans, we can, you know, discuss who can do what, maybe assign some jobs within the family, who can set the table, who can do the dishes, who can take the trash out, you know, things like that. Last that I wanted to share within this is, we all can pitch in and we should. What we need to do is accept this new change and ask for help. We need to be creative and be flexible and try not to be hard on yourself. We have to find a balance that works for our family. The goal should be to stay sane and stay safe. And quickly, few tips for the high school students and the college students because researchers over the past decades, so it's not something that is related to this pandemic. Over the past decades, researchers and the studies have shown that there was an increase in prevalence of depression and anxiety among college students across the United States. And now campus closing and everything is fundamentally shifting. College students, they are feeling loneliness. They're also, there is a, there is an increased rate of anxiety, again, that is fueled by the uncertainties surrounding this virus. So before we go get into the solution, it's really important to think about the ways to be positive and to pause and recognize that this is a really, really difficult time. And especially with teenagers, having them, you know, staying home 24/7, this may not be labor-intensive as being held up with the younger children, but it definitely has its own challenges. You know, younger children, they might be thrilled, you know, okay, we'll be home and parents are, you know, continuously watching us, you know, my mom will be with me all the time, I don't have to go to school. But for adolescents, they feel very different. So the first very easy tip is for our adolescents is, understand their frustration over not seeing their friends. This might be a little hard to understand or no family first and all that, but this age, at this age, we fully, fully understand that for them, their friends are hugely important to them. And bonding with their peers, it was the, and it is, is still one of the essential development tasks of their adolescence. So if we see that our teens, they are home and they are bored, it's better that we should understand their frustration and we try to converse with them that, and the conversation that is helpful for them. So what we can do, acknowledge that you know it's frustrating for them to be cut off from their friends. Listen to what they're feeling. Validate those feelings and then be direct about how you can work together to make this situation bearable. Loosening rules about time spent on social media, for instance, will help compensate for the socializing time lost with school closings. Encourage them to be creative about new ways to interact with their friends socially. You know, they're, so understanding their frustration and not judging them is the first key or the first advice that I would like to give all of us. And then emphasize on social distancing. I hope all the parents, all the families are doing it, but the problem is, teenagers, they feel invincible, that they're likely, you know, to be well aware that the new coronavirus is not as problematic for their age range as it is for older people. So what parents are actually reporting, they're saying that the teenagers, they're pushing back and they're like, you know what? We are completely fine, you know, our immune system is very strong. And interesting fact, or the reality is, the fact that the data is actually on their side, right? We know that. But what we can, how we can hold them or how we can deal with it is we should talk to them about it and then discuss that exposure to this virus is an exponential thing and that it is really not about them. It's not actually really about the fact that they feel fine or the fact that coronavirus doesn't affect them as much. It is the fact that they could be asymptomatic carriers and they could affect others. Especially if they're living in the joint family system, their grandparents. And meeting with their friends, we can simply say, they just can't know that their friends are well. While they are, you know, they feel comfortable to take the risk, they're also bringing that back in their own houses.
Semeda, you have 30 seconds, please.
Okay, jazakallah khair. And my next tip for the parents is encourage healthy habits in the teenagers. And then also, lastly, I would like, last two points are, validate their disappointments because they're very disappointed, they're not having their school clubs, high schools, their sports seasons, graduations. So please validate their disappointment and sit with them in any activities that they're missing. And the last point is help them practice mindfulness because as a Muslim, praying, doing Athkar, connecting back to Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, reflecting and thinking about the good times are also few aspects that we can share with our college students. Jazakallah khair hina. May Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, grant us the ability and the strength to make our children and be the best parent or at least the parent who can help and make the history for our, for our children, for the generation. Ameen.
Ameen. Jazakallah khair. Sister Semeda, for your advice and for your tips for our younger audience members on how they can successfully navigate out of this crisis. Jazakallah khair. But we know that the youth are not the only ones who need constant reminders. It's the husbands and the wives, the mothers and the fathers who must also balance their emotions and their anxieties with their relationships within their surroundings, Insha'Allah. So I would like to ask Dr. Seima to come and speak. Her topic is about how to shift mental gears while dealing with your family. So please come and inform us about what you've been seeing in your practice and in your profession, Insha'Allah.
Assalamualaikum. A'udzubillahimashan'rajim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Bisharli salim wa yasarli amadumillah. Coming with him for the little kids. It's wonderful. It sounds like a plan. Today, my topic is shifting mental gears to deal with the family. I remember when I came in America in 2000. At that time, I had a surgery and doctor told me each and everything before the surgery, what I'm going through with that. And then buy something for my little daughter and the same thing there that I had instruction for those things. Thirdly, I bought a car at that time and I had a manual with that car. What was that? That was the, complete instructions were there. It's the instruction, the age of parity. Here, I love this thing and we are used to be very clear and very like having the instructions all the time. But what happened last month, suddenly things are changed. We have completely, we became very confused. Not only we are confused, everybody as an individual, families, even the governments, they are confused too. They don't know what to do, they don't have the hospitals, they don't have the doctors, they don't have anything. Everybody knows because everybody is like very knowledgeable in these days because of the social media. An entire world is have like 360 turn in the lights. Now we can see how it's affecting our primary unit. Primary unit, but Sister Semeda was talking about our kids, about our family and who are the basic unit of that family, husband and wife. They are the most important people in the family. If we can, if we understand how we can take care of the family in this situation, I don't want to go in the detail of this situation. Sister Semeda already discussed all those points, what is happening, how it's happening, how it's affecting. Right now, after this confusion, because we are in the state of confusion, we don't know what is going to be happening tomorrow. Some people, they are saying it's going to be for a week. Some are saying it's for like a four weeks or for a month or it can be like a year. I don't know about that and you don't know either. What we can do right now, right now, what the things are happening at home? The problems are becoming more and more. Relationship problems are coming on the surface. The couples used to fight once in a week. Right now, trust me, I am getting more calls about they are fighting more and more and more. And some couples, they are going to divorce. They are talking about the divorce, they feel like that. You cannot imagine, one of the couple, they are together for 36 years and they told me, they called me yesterday and they told me they wanted to get a divorce because they are feeling they are not compatible. Why they are? Because they are living together a lot more. Few days, when this problem start, it was a honeymoon period for most of the couples because wife, they are staying at home, they are feeling their husband are not giving them a time. Right now, they have a time, their kids are there, they have a family time. And the same thing if the woman is working and all the women who are working, all the working women, they know that very well, including me, that we want to stay at home sometimes. Initially, it feels very good when I was cleaning my closet, when I was doing my dishes by myself, I was cooking for my husband, for my kids. It was very enjoyable. But what happened after a few days? More fighting, kids become more frustrated and things are very, very problematic. What is happening with the kids? Kids are watching the Netflix, they are doing the Netflix and parents, they don't know what they have to do. They are overwhelmed with that. I told all my patients, especially who have the kids, what they have to do. They have to like delayed, they have to work with the delayed gratification. I will talk a little bit about that. Sister Semeda, she discussed a little bit about that, but I will go little in detail after that. Now what I can see, you know, this is a big problem. Coronavirus is a big problem. We, anybody can, anything can happen. What the next problem is coming? Because definite, the economical situation is going to be like a worse, what we can expect. The third important thing, which I can see, being a mental health professional and which I can see my patients, they are becoming more and more anxious. They are having the more depression, they are having the more problems. That's why I start doing like a little small lectures because I wanted to let them know they are okay, but they are not feeling in that way. The mental health is going to be a big issue in the future. What we can do as like a basic unit, I'm just saying like that husband and wife, what they can do at home, which can help them to change this shift because this is a big shift and this is a big, big, big thing. This is not a little small thing which we can say, oh, we can, we can focus in like a near future, we can discuss about that, we need to think it today. I want to discuss one of very important book, which I used to tell all my patients. They are coming in the first session, I told them, please read this book because this book is like a kind of little miracle. This is book there is "Who Moved My Cheese?" This is very important book. This book is about the denial. Denial is a defense mechanism. Most of the people, they love to stay in the denial. They feel like the problem is not with them. They feel like that they are not facing that problem. Oh, I'm okay, I'm a little kid, I'm like 30 years old, I have strong immunity system, let me go outside or maybe these problems are what the Dr. Seima is talking, these are not my problem, this is somebody else's problem. But actually, there are their problems. Please accept it. Come out from this denial and accept it. If you will accept it, then we can ready and do something else. When we are going to accept, we should tell ourselves, it's okay. What they discuss in this book, let me take some points which I can elaborate a little bit and you can read this book and you can understand more. Number one, they are not surprised. The people who are successful, who are ready to take the challenges, they are not at all, they are not surprised. They accept the reality and they feel like that future is uncertain, but they are positive about this uncertainty. Nobody has controlled the future. Second thing, they are ready to act. They are willing to accept the change, this challenge, and they are taking the practical actions, as Sister Semeda was talking, taking the practical action for the kids. Same thing they can do with themselves. Then next one is they adopt very quickly. I love to give the example and GPS is my favorite. GPS is like a system which tells you where you have to go. If you will take a wrong exit, that GPS system will not start crying, will not say, oh, I don't want, I cannot go. What happened with me? It should not happen with me. Why, why, why? As most of people, they have it. He start rerouting, rerouting. Though the way he is telling next, it can be little longer, it can be little difficult. But the problem, the problem is that if you will not reroute it, it will not take you to your destination. To reach to your destination, you have to reroute. Your brain, as a husband and a wife, you should start like thinking again and try to reroute your brain. Don't say, oh, I did not save this, I didn't do this, I should, I should do this. Oh my God, I should not, don't say, oh my, oh my God. Don't use this word. Try to tell yourself, let me fix my GPS. And the most important thing, if you will read a lot of books and biographies of the different successful people, they talk about the persistent. And we need a persistency right now the most. Whatever Sister Semeda was talking, if we will be persistent with that, you will see it. It will bring a lot of changes at your home, though it's not easy. She talked very eloquently, she told everything in very detail. I'm not going in that detail. But try to pick few things from that But try to pick few things from that and after that make some plan. And be persistent with that. And the most important thing, the people, successful people who are ready to take the challenge, they monitor the situation to make sure that they are ready for the new change. And now I want to discuss about my favorite Dr. Daniel Amon. And I'm lucky to be certified with him. He's a very famous doctor. He has his own university. And you can see his TED Talks, which is very helpful, especially in this situation. He talk about, like he said, if you want to take care of yourself and you are determined, you are out of the denial, you are not surprised, you are ready to act and you are very quickly to adopt and you are persistent, but I told you, read in that book. Then you, what you have to do, sit together, together and make a plan. Husband and wife, and if you don't like each other, still you have to have to sit together because right now you don't have option. You have the little kids. If you have a fight, yes, I know that, I can understand. You can fight later on when things will be over. Right now, try to think about that, what is needed at this time. Because if you will miss the boat, trust me, you cannot get it back. Because the people, that book talk about that, that the people who take very quick changes and adopt that and work hard with that, with the open mindedness, they are all the time better than the other people who are behind. Dr. Daniel Amon, he said, we have to make a four circles. Number one circle is biological circle, number second spiritual, number third social and fourth psychological. Biological circle, that's the circle you are making for yourself, for your family, for your kids, for your, if you have a parents at your home, also make them separately. Treat everyone like as a project, as an individual. Don't feel like that one gloves fit to everyone. Don't feel like that. Because we have a different personality and we will act in a different way. We cannot just read on the internet and see that some like a guideline and start to applying to everyone. It's not possible. Because we are different human beings. Every human being has different impressions. Why? Because Allah created us with a different personalities. Yes, we have some commonalities, but still we have some things which in common. Biologically, we can take care of our health, our physical health, we can exercise, as Sister Samara discussed. And we can, we can take care of vitamins, immune systems, vegetables, whatever we can take, we can. I spoke a lot about my videos, you can go and see there what I talk about that, that biologically, how you can take care of yourself. Spiritually, Sister Samara explained very well. Try to do more spirituality because it will help. Faith helps a lot in this situation. Socially, you can connect with your loved one through the internet, through the chats, through the like. There are so many multimedia things, we have so many things, emails, FaceTime, WhatsApp, a lot of different things which you can help you and try to do the FaceTime. If you are here, your loved one in Pakistan, you can talk to them, India, anywhere. And you feel like that they are very near to you. The most important thing, which is like I'm specialized in that psychological thing, that's the most important thing. You should be not overwhelmed by yourself and your spouses. Try to take care of your mental health. Stay positive. This is my favorite. All the time I talk about that. Positivity is my favorite and after that cooperation.
Dr. Saima, you have thirty seconds, Insha Allah, please.
Okay. Plan, structure, understand yourself first and save your family, avoid emotional vomiting and become emotionally intelligent. Thank you very much. Allah bless you and Allah bless me too.
Jazakallah Khair, Jazakallah Khair, Dr. Saima. Insha Allah. And finally, I would like to invite Sister Farhin. We've been seeing up until now how important it is for every member of the household to play their part and play their role, even in these trying times. So Farhin, if you can elaborate on what MCNA is? We've been seeing these slides rotating in the back and what it has to offer even during these very difficult times that we are facing.
Assalamualaikum. Rahmatullahi wa barakatuhu. Jazakumullah Khair. Alhamdulillah, we were given this opportunity to come together, put our ideas together. May Allah reward all the organizers behind it. Alhamdulillah. First of all, I would like to congratulate all of us to be given an opportunity to have a continuous, maybe for some, an endless family time, you know, together. Subhanallah. So if you think about it, it's kind of like a time together on an island. Really, you, a lot of people may not agree or may disagree, you know? But it's how we look at things basically, you know? A slight change in our paradigm, you know, it can, it can make a lot of difference and, and you know? So we have to make the best use of whatever situation we are. And we, especially as like, you know, the previous speakers, Sister Samara, Sister Saima, they gave us so many like, you know, wonderful tips. So we have to like, you know, stay positive all the time and you know, Insha Allah. So before, let me get started and give you like, introduce you to what MCNA is. So MCNA is basically, it's the children department of ICNA that deals with kids that are six to fourteen years old. And MCNA is a pioneering children's organization that caters to the instruction of development of Muslim children in North America. As you could see by our MCNA, by our logo and by our name, you know, Subhanallah. Our motto is Believe, Learn, Lead, Insha Allah. Basically, what we do is we teach Islam in relevance to our day and our age. So as our kids may become and grow up to be proud Muslims and beneficial future leader for our community irrespective of wherever they are, wherever they may live, you know? So MCNA basically brings Muslim children of all backgrounds together to learn about Islam, helping them real life, you know, concerns, offering them a support in living as dedicated young Muslims. And how do we exactly do that? So we offer multiple in-person and online platforms for two age groups, basically. So primarily, it's six to ten years, it's elementary school, age level kids. And we categorize them as MCNA kids with MCNA holukas. And then there are eleven to fourteen years old kids that are, though they do not like to be called kids. So they are Y M J, Young Muslim Junior. And they're usually primarily from kids from starting like middle school to all the way from like freshman year of the high school. So how we go about it is how we hold monthly, bi-weekly and weekly in-person classes throughout the United States. In a lot of states, you know, we are all over. And these holukas and classes are conducted in a very kid-friendly atmosphere where kids are encouraged to share their points of views and concerns and ask questions. And you know, giving them opportunity to not only express themselves, but also clarifying, you know, their questions and their concerns. Our teachers are actually trained at least minimally twice a year where they go through this training. And you know, so Alhamdulillah. So we as human beings, we always want to belong somewhere, right? We don't want to be the ones just standing out and like, you know, not belonging to any group of people or, or, you know? So these holukas, you know, are specifically designed to provide this sense of belonging and a friendly Muslim environment to the kids. So in these holukas, we include relevant and current events and topics. And, and you know, we make it very relatable to the kids, like, you know? So due to the current situation that is COVID nineteen, we have also go on, we have also gone online. So as the COVID nineteen, as the coronavirus is evolving, so are we, but for better. Alhamdulillah. So currently, we are offering virtual holka. So we have gone online. It's a weekly holka on national level. It's on a webinar and where it's free, anyone can join in. We recently, we have been, you know, receiving overwhelming amount of registration. So we also increased capacity of our room. Where they go through a series, they've been going through a series of different, you know, stories of different prophets and their lesson learned from their trials and tribulations, hence making it very relevant to our situation, you know? And Alhamdulillah. So we are incorporating these topics so kids not only can make sense of what's going on, but also understand, you know, the Islamic perspective on whatever our situation is today, you know? This is giving them a positive outlook on the, on the, the whole worldly scenario. And in the main, in the meantime, connecting them to Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala too, you know? And our teachers, Mashallah, they're amazing speakers. They have dedicated their time, you know? And you know, they're making sure that like, you know, it's also a very interactive class where they go about and like, you know, kids can post their questions and, and you know, they're answered. And they're also playing Kahoots. So kids are very excited, you know, about these online classes. And, and they're feeling that sense of belonging and you know, their time is spent positively. On local level also, our holukas, most of our holukas have also gone online and they're conducting like on Zoom. So Alhamdulillah. So you know, we, as you know, Sister Saima and Sister Samara suggested, like, you know, we need to keep them engaged in meaningful activities. And we're doing that by sending weekly activities with these holukas where we take into account creative activities relating them to like, you know, grow something. Sometimes they would, you know, it's an everyday activity. If they choose to, it's not mandatory. It's something to give them like, you know, a positive and explore their, you know, different aspects of like signs and, and, and different things like one of the activities that they did was like a walking water and this and that. So you know, Alhamdulillah. So those are sent out and those are also shared during those webinars. Alhamdulillah. And we are getting the feedbacks and the pictures back and kids are like really enjoying their time doing that. So we are coming up and giving them some creative, you know, weekly activities, Alhamdulillah, daily activities actually. So Alhamdulillah, Subhanallah, as for Ramadan, you know, it's probably not going to be the same. It's going to be very different. We may not get a chance, hopefully, I hope this situation results, but we may not get a chance to go to our usual Tarawees or, you know, used to be doing, whatever we doing. But you know, this is also a time to reflect upon like, you know, what the Namas that we never even counted on, right? We always thought that we can just get up, drive our car, go to the Rabi, go to Masjid and Subhanallah. So you know, we have to give this, you know, make our kids understand that we have to take everything positive out of it, you know? And counting the Namas and the blessings of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, that we never even thought like we had, you know? So we, as with, you know, Ramadan, as for Ramadan, like MCNA is also holding.
Thirty seconds, please, Insha Allah.
Okay, two levels of journey through Quran for both age groups. So please register if you haven't already and you know, raising a children is, and the character building of children is a major responsibility, not only for the parents, but for the community. We take it very seriously. We offer multiple programs like Prime Time and Y M J courses. And we also offer a companion magazine, which is for the kids, by the kids, where our kids give a platform to show their work and their talents twice a year. And Insha Allah, if you want to contact us, you can email, email us at mcnatikna.org. And you can find us at Facebook and Instagram also on social media. And we even have our MCNA Y M J YouTube channel. Insha Allah, remember that we are all in this together and by Bazeenin Laheet Allah, we'll come out victorious, Insha Allah. Let's just put our trust in Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Jazakallah Khair. Assalamualaikum. Rahmatullah.
Jazakallah Khair, Sister Farhin. Now, Insha Allah, just wanted to ask a couple of questions to all of our speakers here. Insha Allah, then we will quickly conclude the session. Farhin, the first question is to you. The question I have is that how, you're explaining and you're telling us so much about MCNA and what you guys are doing, Mashallah, and how you are getting the kids involved in the Islamic movement. How is it different? How is MCNA different from an Islamic school or Sunday school? If you can just very briefly explain that, Insha Allah.
Okay, Jazakumullah Khair for asking this particular question because we get this question a lot. Alhamdulillah. We basically, how we are, we, as I mentioned in our introduction, that we are basically Islam, like an enrichment program. Where we, you know, we enrich about Islam, you know, in, in a more, more of a like, more relevant to society kind of a way, you know? So where kids come in, they participate, you know, they feel like they belong here. And you know, believe me, some of the kids, like, you know, they just, just love coming to MCNA. In fact, we have experienced so many times if it's held, once a, once a month, the, the parents and the kids are actually requesting to be, you know, for it to be like twice, twice a month or every week, you know, Subhanallah. So it's, it's different in a way that from Sunday Saturday school that there were, where it's like a set curriculum where they will teach you, but not explain you how to, and I'm not saying that every Sunday Saturday school does that, but like, you know, it has a set curriculum where you have test and, and you have your curriculum and you're supposed to study this and that. Here, we bring in kids, it's more of like a holka kind of thing where they do, they post their questions and their concerns and they share their, you know, point of views with each other and then they have some activities together. We also offer like a lot of other things like, you know, summer programs and, and, and so many, you know, we, we also started a robotic club somewhere with MCNA, Subhanallah. There's also Girl Scout with MCNA going on, Subhanallah. So it's very diverse. It's, it's very different, you know, Alhamdulillah. I hope I've answered my, my question.
Jazakallah Khair, Farhin. You sure did. Alhamdulillah. Jazakallah Khair for your response to the question and your presentation. But I also want to go back to Dr. Saima and ask you a question that, you know, for example, if a family is facing, you know, financial uncertainty or financial demise even, how can a husband or a wife or even both together develop a certain level of emotional intelligence to support one another?
Assalamualaikum. Thank you, Sister Hina. This is a very good question because a lot of people are asking that. When I was sharing the other stuff, they said, Dr. Saima, I don't have a money to pay my mortgage. I don't have this thing. I don't have. How we can go with that with the your mental health tips? I told them, that's what I'm going to share with you, that because this is a difficult time. First of all, you need to sit and plan and try to like understand each other. Because if you are not understanding, then you cannot talk about that. And emotional intelligence is that, that you can understand yourself and also your spouse. I use that word emotional vomiting, rather than put emotional vomiting to each other, become emotional intelligent. Then you are becoming the emotional intelligent, try to understand each other and after that make a plan. Definitely, whatever you have it, being living in America, especially in America, definitely you have some corners where you are spending a lot. Everybody, including me, we are spending much more than, more than our resources sometime and we have a lot of stuff which we don't have to use it. We have to cut all the corners, sit and think about that, make the plan and cut all the corners and especially take care of your mental health. Because you definitely heard that saying that if you have less money, you can stay together. If you have a love, if you have understanding, the most important thing is love and understanding and try to understand other person. Before that, it was little different, but right now situation is very different. It's like a crisis. It's like a war. It's like something where we have to change our habits. If people, first of all, all the people, they say, oh, my husband, he doesn't listen to me. My wife, she doesn't listen to me. Try to create a change in yourself, first of all with yourself and then try to become a model and then other person and try to tell the other person. But because we have to make it quick decisions. I told the people, fake it until you make it. Try to faking at home that you have a very, you are a very good couple, you have understanding. When you start, start telling yourself, your neurotransmitters are making to make that, that pathway where you will say, oh, yes, we understand each other. Then if you will understand each other, definitely it will not financially help you. It will help you for the other stuff too, for your kids, for your family, for yourself. And also at your job too, because definitely your boss, your employees, they have the different type of personality. If you will not understand at this point, then you are not going to get anywhere. Hope I answered that question.
Alhamdulillah, you did. Absolutely. Jazakallah Khair, Dr. Saima. Alhamdulillah, Insha Allah. I'm sure we're all making note of it and, and trying to see how we can incorporate that into our own personal lives, Insha Allah. Finally, our last question for the session, I will leave it to Sister Samara. Your question is, how can we help our children understand that by working together, we can overcome anything? Even a global pandemic, you know, that collectivism is really, really crucial and critical to our survival? Please explain, Samara.
Jazakallah Khair, Hina. And again, very, very beautiful question because especially given these times where we are socially distancing and, you know, the main focus is just you, your, yourself and your family, even in some families, families are. the main focus is just you, your, yourself and your family, even in some families, families are actually, you know, spending their lives or at least couple of weeks in their own rooms. So Subhanallah, this is, we should take it as a great opportunity for ourselves and for our children, even for the entire family, to remind them that this is the spirit of Islam regardless of the situations. The spirit of Islam is each time when we open Quran, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala addresses us, which is the form of a plural. So each time Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala does not addresses us as, you know, as an individual. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala addresses us as an Ummah. And Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala also in the Quran, he addresses us, that means you are the best nation. So that means again, you're not alone and Islam does not work or focus on the individualism. Islam rather, from the beginning of, you know, when we learn Quran, Islam and in the Quran teaches us to understand the concept of collectivism. In the Quran, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala also addresses us, which is you are like, wow. The saying of the Prophet Muhammad SAW and the Hadith in the Bukhari and Muslim Prophet Muhammad SAW said, "The parable of the believers in their affection, mercy and compassion for each other is that of a body. When any limb aches, the whole body reacts with sleeplessness and fever." So Subhanallah, knowing when Prophet Muhammad SAW migrated to Medina, the first few steps in his planning were he established the Muslim Brotherhood, the Muakhah system in that newly formed community. So again, this pandemic might be, you know, it looks really big to us, but as a Muslim, if we look at it, it is the test from Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, it is the test, it is the time for us to reflect, to learn and to adapt and make, and looking into ourselves that what are the things that we need to maybe, you know, enhance? What are the things that we need to strengthen? So we are like a body and we can definitely help our children. There are two tips that I wanted to quickly share, which is you can help them to make Dua for the entire Muslim Ummah and for the entire, you know, world, for every single one, regardless of their belief, because whoever is in pain against Islam teaches us to, you know, make Dua for, for, for everyone. And then also you can remind them, or you and I can remind them, to donate for the needy. Maybe from their allowances or maybe, you know, for the can drives or, you know, whatever relief organization, Subhanallah, Iqna Relief is on the frontline. We can remind them to donate to the, to organizations. And also we can remind our youth as well to write maybe cards or maybe Ramadan cards. Or maybe, you know, send cards to the teachers about how, you know, they're helping, maybe to the doctors. So Subhanallah, even in this time where everybody is socially distant, we can definitely remind our children and the youth about the collectivism spirit of Islam, which is the core value of our beautiful religion. I hope I answered your question, Hina.
Jazakallah Khair, Samara, you most definitely did. And there you have it. So what we want to make contagious, we want this to be contagious, is our reliance on Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala.
That's true, Subhanallah.
So may Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala reward us all for the time that we have spent in his way, safely in our homes and may he relieve us of this trial and this burden and may we have learned for the better, Ameen. Please do not forget to visit Iqna Sisters on our website, www.iqunasisters.org. Please take advantage of all the programs that are offered by MCNA. And to all of the ladies out there, please sign up to receive our daily Quranic briefings. Alhamdulillah, you can get it on your WhatsApp, you can subscribe to our podcast, you can subscribe to our YouTube channel, we're everywhere, Alhamdulillah. So a special, special thanks to my guest speakers on this panel and to the organizers for this very historical symposium. And we hope, Insha Allah, that you enjoy the rest of your time with the symposium and take back what you've learned to your family and to your friends and to the global family at large, Insha Allah. Jazakumullah Khair and Wassalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Wabarakatuh.